Today is Monday, January 25. Village Board of Pleasantville Work Session. Three related items. Discussion about outdoor dining. Soul Brewing on Wheeler and Alan Wallace is on the call. Dolphin South on Wheeler, I'm not sure if those folks are on the call. And Vella Kitchen on Washington Avenue, Michael Madden is on the call. So you want to set the stage here, Eric?
Sure, so as you may know, we have the blocks out in front of these three establishments. And right now they are operating in what essentially is the village's right of way under a outdoor dining permit. Our village code, which has been amended based on the challenges that COVID has brought about, allows these establishments to place items, certain items, in our right of way. Things like structures, tents, huts, even heaters need to flow through the building department, which would then amend their outdoor seating permit to allow for these items. So before anything can be permitted, well, what I should say is anything that goes in that right of way has to essentially be authorized by the Board of Trustees. You are the stewards of the village property and the village right of way.
Afraid of that. So attached in Novus are some backup things. We can start with Soul. Alan has included his heater diagram proposing to put these four, I guess propane fired heaters.
That's great.
Anything else you want to say about that, Alan?
They're just the same sort of propane heaters that, you know, are all over, you know, all over the place in front of Pub Street. I just want to be able to wield them out there because what I'm getting now is regular calls from people saying, do you have outdoor seating with heating? And I say, no, we don't yet, and click, and they're gone.
Robert, any thoughts on?
No, we went through extensive research some time ago for the businesses, sent out an email to multiple restaurants explaining the type of heater that would be permitted. But again, as Eric mentioned, anything in the village right of way has to go through the process of the board being aware of it to approve it prior to us amending the permit.
And so the heaters Alan is proposing are compliant. Right, so anybody have any comment about that? It seems fine to me.
Look, great, that's great.
Let's get some more so we can get out there.
All right, all right, let her rip.
Great, thank you.
All right. Then next on the list was Dolphin South. Is anybody from Dolphin South on the call?
I ran into Giovanni before. He said he would not be able to jump on, but they provide that backup.
So again, attached in Novus Agenda is the yurt that Dolphin built and has come back now to us to take a look at it. It's, I guess, a pine frame with muslin stretched across it and then tied down to the concrete barriers and to a wooden base that he added. So any comment on this, Robert?
Oh, I talked with Eric and kind of jotted down a few concerns. And this would apply to Vella as well, just particularly. Looking at the building code, there are certain criteria from snow loading, wind load, egress, accessibility, but the structure is in the village property. And the building code applies to structures on private property. So it really is in the purview of the municipality to look at the general scope. Now, I think this is completely different times. It created a unique situation. I don't think any of these businesses would really be looking for these items in any other time. It's due to what's happening. As long as the village, I think, is relieved of any liability and we have their insurances, I don't see a significant issue. But I did point out a couple items, Eric, just from the general term of how we would look at it if they wanted to put this on their private property and the same usage.
And those are, what are the?
I'm not sure if Eric, it was kind of via an email. I'm not sure if he says it up, but I can discuss them if you like.
Well, I mean, your issues were about wind resistance, snow load, all that kind of stuff, right?
Right, snow loading, wind loading, the ability to hold it down, egress, accessibility. For instance, just recalling the greenhouse for Vella, I think the doorway in was 22 inches wide. Clearly, that would never meet compliance in any other situation. But, and we are talking about a hugely different scenario, the current pandemic, what's happening to these businesses. I don't think they would want to do something that puts them in liability. And they're kind of probably limited in try to accomplish something to stay open. I think the alternative of businesses being closed is worse.
Right. So I noticed that it seats only one group, you know, a group of, let's say, four people or something like that. That's all, it's just one. And I'm wondering, Alan, if you're planning on doing something like that on your, you know, in front of your building, in front of your space?
I had wanted to before, but after the previous meeting, I kind of came to the conclusion that it was going to be too complicated, too expensive. And by the time I got approval, the winter would be all but over. So I kind of gave up on it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So Michael Madden from Vella's on. And attached in our agenda is the greenhouse gizmo. You want to comment, is this the same thing you have in Larchmont?
That's exactly right. And that's why Larchmont is actually was like kind of a testbed for the scenario because I never really envisioned bringing this to Vella Kitchen. Because except for the circumstances, I just, I never really saw the appeal of sitting in a greenhouse by yourself. People have been doing it, so. And we've had those since Thanksgiving in Larchmont. And they were actually a gift from the Chamber of Commerce for the restaurants. It went through the building department, it went through the fire department, just to see if this was acceptable in these times.
And?
So there was no outlet for us. We didn't have to pay for them. They were a gift.
Post pandemic, you can grow pea shoots or?
Well, it's funny, I have an organic farmer who's going to take two of them off of our hands when we're done.
So, Michael, did they just sit on the ground or are they anchored in some way?
Sit on the ground and we just put planters around because in terms of the specifications, they can take 15 inches of snow, they are wind resistant, I forgot the specs, but up to, you know. Yeah, they're designed to actually be permanent structures on your property, you know.
Right.
Or semi-permanent, you know.
Just to, you're correct, doing a little research, but there is a difference between a structure going on a private residential home.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Somebody being in it. So there's a little bit difference where, as the case with Alan, when you're dealing with a structure on your private property, when you're under 144 square feet, no building codes really apply. They expected you to meet it, but it doesn't technically apply. So it's a bit different. In this case, the uniqueness comes in, these greenhouses are quite small, but now they're on village property. Whereas Alan, I think, was a different structure, was a larger and was being constructed on site. So we were looking at it a little bit differently as well on that one.
Right.
I didn't realize there were going to be several of them. So there's one table per greenhouse, is that how it works?
So it's like two to four people per greenhouse.
And how many would fit in front of your place?
If we really jammed it, we could put six, but I think four is more than enough.
So, go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to say, I agree with them because it's individual. If it were that enclosed and it were going to be people who were not in the same party, then I think it would be a problem.
Right, right, it wouldn't be big enough for the distancing. So, I mean, I think my sense of it is, under the circumstances, so long as you guys indemnify the village against anything that might happen, we're inclined to help in any way we can. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure with me. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Michael, how easy is it to remove those structures if we were to get, you know, a significant storm that would have, you know, high mile per hour winds?
Would probably take about two hours to remove all the structures.
They bolt, they bolt together?
Yes, they bolt together.
Okay.
Probably about a half hour per structure to remove.
Will they show up configured prefab or are you building them there?
I'm building, I've actually, I've become really good at building them. You know, I built all the ones in Larchmont.
So in the hypothetical that we were concerned about the possibility that a storm might be too severe for them to withstand it, you could dismantle them?
We could also bring them inside because they come flat panels, you know.
Yeah.
Bring them inside the restaurant.
Okay.
With respect to Dolphin South, I'm just curious with the yurt, why they want a structure that only allows for one table? Is that?
Well, it's interesting. I was talking to Giovanni, the gentleman who owns Dolphin South, and it was actually a patron who built that, donated essentially to him. He says he doesn't currently have the staff even to provide service for outdoor dining. So he's not really even utilizing it. And, you know, I think that material is probably less resilient to the winter weather than the greenhouse, the greenhouses. So that provides kind of an issue in another.
He's not using it and doesn't intend to, or?
I think when he feels comfortable to hire more waiters or waiting staff, then he may bring it into rotation, but he does not, does not seem he has a urgent need for it at this point.
I mean, it's just a little, engage whatever small amount of risk is attached to it if you're not using it.
Yeah, and I'm happy to have a follow up conversation to kind of feel that out with Giovanni.
All right. Well, so.
Concern I had too, that the greenhouse, at least as Michael had mentioned, it's designed to withstand loading. I have some concerns with that as it's built, no offense, but the material alone is not outdoor material.
Right. And you wonder how much heat it would provide for that reason.
I suppose the thought is just a windbreak, so.
I mean, insulation, I guess.
You can't have a heater underneath a tent. That's the concern because of the.
Right.
Maybe hire Michael to build a couple of greenhouses for him.
The greenhouse, lighting or heat in those?
Larchmont, actually, we got these, they're used for ice fishing and camping. They're these tiny propane heaters that the fire department authorized and donated for us.
They're authorized to be used in an enclosed environment?
Correct. I sent that also to Eric.
So it's like, these are like ice fishing huts on Washington Avenue.
It's, they're really cool. I don't think that, I think that even people that would sit inside, there's a once and done mentality. People like, like we had, like about two or three weeks ago when we had snow in Larchmont, people asked to sit outside. They had a reservation inside, but because of the snow, they thought it would be really cool to sit in this greenhouse and watch the snow, so.
Oh, Robert, you've seen these propane heater specs?
I did, I'm going to look them up. From what I saw, I think it was a photo, it looked as if the unit didn't contain the propane, it was on the inside, looked like kind of electric, but I'll have to take a look at it.
Yeah, so, well, so my sense of it is, again, if whoever builds this stuff accepts whatever risk is attached to it, that we should allow it to happen, you know, obviously with whatever oversight we can. Anybody else feel the same or otherwise?
Yeah, I think as long as they're individual, so there's no, because there's no ventilation, but the servers are just in and out of there, right? So it's people who are coming together, so I think it's fine then, as long as it's safe in the wind.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with you.
When he does, when he's starting to install it, we can certainly go out there, take a look and ensure that it's properly secured.
Yeah, I agree too.
All right.
Me too.
There you have it.
Thank you so much.
Start with the pea shoots, come the spring.
Okay, so we can donate them to the farmers market when we're done.
Yeah, I think you ought to speak to the farmers market about that.
Well, we can raffle them off.
Yeah, somebody will want them, that's for sure.
Yes, they are valuable.
You can sell them on eBay or something.
And we have eight of them now. If we have four here and four in Larchmont, we have eight to get rid of.
Wow. Well.
Thank you very much.
I will look forward to the day when you have confidence that you can get rid of them. That would be a happy moment for all of us.
I agree with that. And I would like to remove, because like, sitting outside, just, you know, al fresco is much more enjoyable than sitting in a greenhouse. I'm going to remove them when it's nicer.
Good luck to you and to all of you. This is a tough time, but we're, we really are rooting for you.
No, and you guys have proven it, and I can't thank you guys enough. I mean, just showing the jersey blocks in the beginning and just continuing with them has been really helpful for us.
Well, thank you for all you do. And Alan, if you're still on, you know.
For us as well, thank you.
Very much appreciate.
Guys, we appreciate you not giving up on the village because know that it can't be a positive net present value at the moment, staying open, but it's important to all of us.
Right.
And quality operations like the ones you run, we're going to be okay in the end if we can just get through this.
Yeah.
Lock arms and try to get there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Bye bye, everybody.
Then, Eric, you can have the conversation, you and Robert, with Dolphin. I mean, if they're not using it, I'm not sure, I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, and I'll follow up with Giovanni.
I mean, if someone built it for him, he may.
And it's not, I mean, don't get me wrong, it's nice, it's good craftsmanship, you know, the little dolphin on top.
Yeah. All right. All right, great. So we're a little ahead of schedule. Chief is on, just an update on the police reform process. So as, as you guys already know, the last in our scheduled series of forums is this Thursday, the 28th, at 7:30. Focused this time on communications, community policing practices, outreach to specific communities. So we're still collecting commentary through the email address, although that has not been, not much received lately, true, Noreen?
That's correct.
So I've had a number of conversations just offline with various different people. And I think the takeaway from that is that, first off, I think people are assured, as I think they should be, with the idea that part of what we're doing here is setting up mechanisms that will survive and continue after this April 1 submission. Then, looking forward to hearing back or hearing from David, Nicole, have you reached out to Erin Ballard? Haven't you?
We both spoke to her individually, yes.
Yeah. So, and do you have a sense for what the way forward feels like to her to make sure that whatever input her folks would have, that feels like it needs, it needs a forum now, gets incorporated?
Well, as you know, you know, a number of people that she's in touch with have suffered losses due to COVID recently. And so I think that that is slowing them down. I recontacted Erin and I haven't heard anything back since then, so I'm not quite sure what the timetable is. But I'll contact her again and get a sense of, I think that there was some confusion and I wonder how widespread this was about the expectations for the process. I think that these meetings have been very productive and very informative. They've allowed maybe a little bit less time for discussion and, you know, well, I don't know that that's even true, but, you know, necessarily there's a phase where people have to learn, you know, what the situation is first. And so I don't know if we would want to consider maybe having a meeting once all of our meetings are over, or just put the email out there again to say, you know, now that we're wrapping this up, you know, does anybody have any additional input?
I mean, my thought there was that the group of us, along with Eric, Noreen, the chief and his people, start in the month of, use the month of February to synthesize what we see as a modest set of actionable recommendations with the thought that what we want to send back to the state is, first off, a report of what we've done, but a list of things that we think are consensus items that we could, should, and can act on quickly. And then from there, continue the discussion in lots of other ways. So, you know, somebody said to me that they thought, and I think quite rightly, that the material that the chief has put together, the PowerPoint presentations, and the fact that those are now available on the website at pleasantville.ny.gov, not only have been a good sort of a context giver for the discussion, but filled in a lot of information. I think for lots of folks who aren't involved in this on a day to day basis, including all of us who now have, you know, this stuff assembled in one place, it will take a little while, likely, you know, I think some months to understand some other avenues of improvement that we have. But I also think, speaking for myself, that there are two, three, four things that are likely to be a pretty clear, actionable recommendation. So my thought is, in the month of February, our group puts that together. Comment about it at our February meetings, but towards the end of February or right at the beginning of March, schedule another Zoom meeting to report to folks not only what we've come up with, what we're imagining in draft to send for the April 1 report, but also the sort of list of items on the radar screen to be explored further. What do you guys think?
I think that sounds good.
Fine, Mayor, but I'm confused about the word you used, draft. A draft statement for April 1? I thought that we're supposed to be.
I don't know, I meant a draft for March 1. End of February, beginning of March. So the community and folks who have weighed in on this so far can see what it is we're thinking of proposing. And then give people a chance to kibbitz about that, either to say, hey, we agree with you, or alternatively, why isn't this on there, or how might you change what you said?
Because April is supposed to be, it's the deadline, correct?
Yeah.
But everything you said sounds fine, so that's, that's okay with me.
I would agree, but perhaps we could do, at least when I'm looking at new laws that the government is imposing when I do the immigration law, they usually do like a certain, like a 30 day common period. So if we did something like a 15 day common period where if anyone has anything that they bring up, we'd have to put a deadline until when common period is. And then after that's done, officially, that's when it closes out. From there, we essentially go forth with whatever comments were made, make a final edits, that way we make sure it's done by April 1st. That would be the only suggestion that we'd do is just.
So, I mean, maybe realistic, I think realistic for us to imagine, maybe we get that draft set of recommendations out by the last week of February, and then that might give us two, three weeks for folks to consider it. What do you think, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we set a specific deadline, so that, you know, no one's coming like after, you know, that date, and now we've already drafted what we're working on and they're trying to put something else. I guess everyone noticed that we're doing a common period from when people can comment on it, essentially.
So, you know, just, just as we've said before, this is, we're not intending this to be a, you know, a stem to stern review of every aspect of a police department. That's obviously beyond the scope of this immediate effort, but I do think there are going to be some specific things we can focus on. Had an exchange today with John Nona, the county attorney, on a couple of items that it looks like the county is, or the county task force doing the same kind of thing for the county is going to come up with. And so we'll have some of that in the next week or two as well, and that'll feed into this process, so.
So I don't mind the comment period, that's perfectly fine, two weeks, three weeks, that's perfectly fine. Just be aware, there might be, I don't know if there will be or there won't be, but there might be some people who really want to make drastic changes over that two week period and you won't be able to do it. You won't, you know, I mean, we can consider them later, but there won't be, you know, that much time to make edits. There'll be minor edits, there'll be, you know, little, little things, but, and if there are any big ideas, you know, they'll have to be set aside until later.
I mean, what we're talking about here are largely policy decisions. And, and so those are available to us at any time, so, you know, I just.
Do we have any, I mean, I guess the only question I have is, do we have a sense of whether the, not the public in general, but specific folks who have a point of view on one thing or another, like community policing, feel like they've had enough input into it? And whether any of that needs to be interactive as opposed to?
Well, so, I mean, it'll be interesting to see what we, the community policing piece is the subject of the Thursday meeting. And, you know, one of the things that's come up in our previous discussions is folks saying, you know, why, why can't we have more police on foot? Why can't police be more visible around the schools in the morning or at recess or at dismissal, that sort of stuff? So I assume we'll hear more of that over the course of our discussion on Thursday. And Chief and Eric and Noreen and I had a conversation in a preliminary way that will flesh out for all of you, about some of the options presented that we may have with the existing workforce. And, you know, then there are some other options that people would like to see that might mean we need more people or more overtime or more, any of the above, and there would be a cost attached to it. So, you know, part of the question is going to be working through, how can we, how can we deploy the assets we already have without additional expense? And then what kind of requests are people interested in seeing that might cost more? So part of that obviously feeds into the budget process that we're about to begin for the budget that has to be approved by, that has to be posted in draft in March and approved by, by the end of April for the fiscal year to begin June 1. So, you know, a long way around saying, I think it's a timely moment to hear what people have to say. I'm not at all sure that we'll be able to have a final answer to some of it, but I also think it's likely that some pieces of it, we can respond to pretty quickly, so. And I think, again, part of what I'm hoping we do is, is sort of catalog what people have to say, give people a lot of information, hopefully trigger in them an interest in engaging down the line and keep it going.
Yeah. One question, last time Paul raised the idea of doing a Spanish language session, Zoom session. Given the timeline that you've given us, Peter, when do you think that would?
Well, I mean, we could do that anytime. What do you, what do you think?
Paul, do you have thoughts about that?
I guess I was thinking, are we, we have a couple more, I forget, how many more do we have sessions altogether?
Well, we have one more, one more session scheduled, that's the one for this Thursday about community policing, et cetera. And then we haven't scheduled yet, but intend to have another session to present and discuss the draft recommendations. We could add in there a Spanish language session that might incorporate any subject. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that would be best, between the final, when we're going to present the draft, and then the final presentation. And then, I guess, just kind of, we can see if we can get out there the interest of someone. we can see if we can get out there the interest of someone, you know, who would want to be interested in following this and then go from there.
Okay.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be, you know, obviously anyone's invited to come, but we would see what the interest is in it. Cause I want to make sure that, you know, people are gonna-
Great. Well, can you take the lead on that and figure out one makes sense to do it and then
Absolutely.
we'll support you and participate.
Yes. And I know Nicole and I were, were talking about it on our own too. So I would, I'll, I'll report back to the whole board and then we'll go from, most likely it'll be between those two dates. I'll pick a date and then we'll go from there how we can get it out to social media, I would imagine would be the best way.
Chief, you have anything to throw into that mix?
So, no, not specifically. I mean, I would just reiterate what I've tried to say before, which is I'm very committed to the village board. Sort of guiding the department in an overall sense, where we go, what we do, what, what our priorities are. And that's not something that ends on April 1. So if, for whatever reason, I understand absolutely people's desire to be part of this process. It's an important process. It's, it's, it's honestly, it's, it's kind of brand new, sort of looking at things this way in a totality sort of sense and really digging down deep into the department. But that doesn't mean if, if meetings happen after the fact and the board is interested in, in, in reaching out to either specific groups or just in general, you know, the idea, you know, I would hate to think that, that anybody believes that, you know, transparency ends on April 1. It's, it's, I think it's critical for what we're doing to make sure that people know that whether it's during this process or afterwards, you know, we can make decisions and make changes, you know, it's not, we're not going to close the doors and stop listening to the public's opinion and input. Once the report is filed or once the, the public meetings are done. So as long as that's top of mind, I'm very appreciative of the board's assistance and, and, and the guidance that you've provided and the, and the way we've gone through this process. I think it's been enlightening and honestly, it's been enjoyable for me. I, I've enjoyed the, the conversations and and I think it's going to yield some very, very tangible results. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And
And we want a PowerPoint every month now too.
Thank you so much, Chief. You've done a great job with these presentations and I have to say it's made me feel proud of, of the village. So.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any comment on that or? All right. So I'll repeat again at the announcements, but it's, it's this Thursday at 7:30. The, the, the next forum on community policing communications and outreach to specific communities. So. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So next up on our list was discussion of the whole police locker room and lower level renovations. Maybe a good story produced for a bad reason. Our sewer backups.
Yeah, I'll give the 30,000-foot view and then let the chief take it away. We've been dealing with a series of sewer backups and have gained a intimate knowledge of our sewer system here in Village Hall. That dates back over 100 years old, 100 years. So we've undertaken three major projects here, replacing parts of the line that have been scoped and identified as being cracked or subpar. One is right in the basement, a piece of the pipe that runs underneath the men's locker room. Subsequently, we've been finding blockages in this big U-pipe. As, as the sewer line leaves the building, these U-pipes are actually not code compliant. And so we were happy to remove that. And then the third piece was we excavated in the walkway here between Village Hall and the train tracks. As the sewer line leaves the building, it makes a 90-degree turn, which apparently is a big no-no in, in plumbing engineering. But it does that and a portion of that pipe had been cracked as well. So we've attacked it by remedying those issues. We've moved to septic safe toilet paper and we've really messaged to the Village Hall staff to be easy on, on the usage of hand towels and toilet paper. So. All of this is to say, we are confident that we've diminished this, the issue of the sewer backups. But, but even before these issues, we were getting sewer backups in the men's locker room since it is the lowest point in Village Hall, maybe twice, twice a year, every six months. So the carpeting down there, to say the least, has taken a beating over, over the years. And I think we're at the point where we should replace it. And so with that becomes more opportunity to kind of take a bigger look at the entire lower level there that has the men's locker room, the women's locker room and this meeting space that's kind of used as, as a gym area as well. So I'll, I'll let the, the chief take it from here.
Sure. So, so that space, like, like Eric had said, that, that's, that's not just the lowest point in the building. That's the lowest point basically on Wheeler Avenue. So any blockages that we were getting, sometimes we're outside the building. Now, we think we've, we've, we're, we're confident that we've put things in place to remediate those things. And we're confident that, that with the good reviews on the, on the plumbing situation and the lack of clogs that we've had recently, that we can move from, excuse me, remediation into recovery. And trying to now make, you know, really like Eric said, take a broad look at what we're doing downstairs. So we have the locker room. That carpet is going to be replaced. It, it had basically backup raw sewage. There's a floor drain in, in the bathroom that attaches to the men's locker room, which was the lowest point. So anytime there would be a stoppage, everything would come out from there.
Can I interrupt with a little historical reference that maybe not everybody knows, which is that when, when the railroad overpass was built in the early 60s, the grade at Wheeler Avenue was raised by a lot. And the area that we're referring to now used to be mostly at grade and is now subterranean, which no doubt had something to do with the wackiness of the system. So, sorry for that interruption.
Not at all. So, so the carpeting that was affected was inside the locker room. And then also inside what we call our training room or our meeting room. It's a, it's a, it's a larger space that we have down there. There is some, some gym equipment that is used by the officers. But it's, it's bigger than that space. And so we had envisioned as, as recently as last year, sort of what we could do with it and how we could change it around, what we would like to do. It, it was somewhat underutilized in the past, only because, you know, you kind of come out of the locker room and head right upstairs. Now we've changed our protocols as far as how each tour comes on and off shift. And so that, that area is getting a lot more use. In addition, we decided and we realized that the way it was laid out would make a tremendous training area. It's got enough room where we can distance our officers with a little bit of investment in some, in a, in a, basically a television set. We'll move, we have a whiteboard down there. We move that by a couple of tables and we can really turn it into a, a first-rate training area. We do do, like we talked about in our last forum, we do do a lot of training in-house. And to have a space like that, that is really sort of up to speed with, with the training we're providing and is useful for the, for the officers, we think is an easy, is an easy sell. So that carpet, that's, that's a major section of, of the carpet renovation and replacement is that training area. And then we would look to do a couple other, like I said, small things just to, to really turn that into a, into a usable training space. Once you go down the hall, there are a couple other side storage rooms and office rooms, which have had water either from the sewer backups or also from other situations where we've had water. It is the basement. It is right next to Bedford Road. So it's a, it's a pretty, the, the, the outside structure of that building, sometimes of a 100-year-old building sometimes shows its age. So the women's locker room is there as well. We're looking to replace the flooring in that to maintain consistency throughout. And then the third piece of the puzzle would be, so currently, as I'm sure many of you are aware, if not all of you are aware, the building was originally a bank that we're in now. And the vault for the bank, if you walk into the police station and you look in through the window right on the, to the back right, you'll see the entrance to the vault. That's where we currently store our evidence. And it seems like a great idea, except for the fact that that space is not ventilated. So anytime we've ever secured any kind of evidence, especially, let's say, plant products or or anything that gives off a distinctive odor, anything that can become moldy, literally from my office, 30 feet down the hall, when somebody opens that door, the smell comes, gets to my office and I can, I can recognize it. So what we're looking to do is move our evidence locker from that space on the first floor to some space that's downstairs. So there's going to have to be some minor building changes. We're going to have to seal up one door, put a door inside that is secure part of the building. And so we're, we're looking to turn that from a, move our evidence from the one spot to the other spot. There is some requirements by state law as far as how you're supposed to secure. There's a lot of requirements to state law and how you secure evidence. But some specific things about how you secure guns, how you secure drugs, how you secure cash. And so we would be much more like, much more easily in compliance with those regulations where we do convert that space to our new evidence locker. So, at this point now, we're still gathering the numbers and putting together what, what our, who our vendors are going to be and what the costs are going to be. We don't expect it to be anywhere near the renovation costs of the communications upgrade because that included not just the space, but also a lot of the equipment that we upgraded at the same time. This should be a relatively straightforward project whereby we are able to replace the flooring that needs to go and then also make the, the necessary upgrades and really use some of the space in ways far more, I don't want to say equitable, just a much better use of the space that we have.
So, and so I, I, I wholeheartedly endorse it. I mean, obviously we need to replace the flooring that's been damaged just to begin with, but the idea of using that big space for a training, conference and gathering space seems great to me. Would you get rid of the gym equipment sitting there?
So there's some gym equipment that's there that we could keep. We, the room is big enough that we could still have a small section. You know, there's, there's kind of been some spread. You know, we kind of had it in one section and then over time, as people bring in different things or we've had things donated, it's sort of taken up some more space, some of which is useful, some of which is not. So when the time comes for the renovation, we'll definitely clean that out, clean that space out, make, you still use it efficiently. So there will still be the opportunity for some of the officers to, to use that, but a lot of the, the machinery and equipment that's in there is going to go.
And does the unventilated vault have any future use after you vacate it?
We, we think there may be, it, it, it would make a perfect file storage area. You know, the, the kind of, I mean, listen, it's, it's still an accessible space. You know, it has a big, huge door on it that, you know, you need a, you have to put a combination in to get to, but records and, and things like that, that aren't, that are basically cold storage that we're not going to be accessing. We can easily put those in there, excuse me, and should be, should be fine.
So, okay. I mean, I, I, I think that is great and I wholeheartedly endorse it. And I think making a modest investment of that is wise. Are there other facility-related ideas that you haven't mined down the road for the space you have, or does that kind of address most of your stuff?
So, I mean, we would, currently we have, our detective office is small for the number of officers we have and the amount of work that they do. You know, we have three detectives in a space that always typically held two. Was built, was, let's put it this way, when the space was decided that that's where we're going to put our detectives, there were two, we now have three. So it does tend to get a little cramped in there. We have a couple low-cost ideas on updating and modernizing the furniture to make it a little much, a little bit better of a, a workable space. We have, by state mandate, we're required to have all of our interviews and interrogations be recorded, excuse me, I shouldn't say interviews, interrogations be recorded. And so we're going to need to upgrade that system at some point in the, in the near future. It's currently operational, but it is showing its age. It's not as, it's not nearly as operational as it used to be. And so that, that will be something that will probably be presenting either part of this project or as a separate project. And, you know, just little things updating, you know, listen, the building is unfortunately, we spent more time probably fixing up the building. You know, more money fixing up the building that would have, we would have loved to put into upgrading and renovating. So we, you know, we're, we're definitely cognizant of this, the financial situation, the fiscal situation. And we realize that, you know, as long as we're in this building, we're going to have to at least earmark some money for putting the pieces back in place as they, as they come under.
Well, hopefully, I mean, Eric Morrissey, you, you're feeling reasonably confident that we have solved the infrastructure problems related to the drainage?
Yes. Yeah. And, and, and I say that every other week. So bi-monthly, we get the, the line scoped by a drainage company where they'll, they'll send in a camera and look both, you know, both ways up the drain and down the drain. And when we're running into these issues, they were seeing buildups every time they came. And it wouldn't necessarily lead to a blockage, but they would come back and say, well, there's sure a lot of toilet paper or materials in the line. We've now had a clean bill of health for, you know, the past 11 visits. So that's telling us, you know, whether it's removing the damaged pipes that have been in place for, you know, 100 years or changing to septic safe or messaging, all of these things are, are being affected. So, yeah, we're, we're feeling better each day passes. I mean, at one point, it was occurring every other week, it felt like.
And I think it's, it's important to say too, I mean, right after the first, if not the second backup that we had, we all realized that that floor needed to be, was going to need to be replaced. And we cleaned it as best we could and we made it definitely, definitely usable. Obviously, it got to a point where we wanted to make sure that we didn't have to have the officers there, which is why we moved the locker room as we did. But, you know, very early on in this process, we committed to making sure that we did replace the floor, but, you know, we weren't going to make that, you know, Eric was very clear about the fact that we're not going to replace the floor until we're very confident that we're not going to, you know, potentially subject ourselves to the same situation all over again. So.
And, and with that said, I mean, I think we're not ignorant to the fact that for 100 years, this building has been dealing with occasional backups that, you know, it may happen again in the future, but we're going to make sure whatever flooring we put down is resilient to that and can easily be cleaned and disinfected and a better alternative to carpeting, no doubt.
We have to have that drain in the floor in the men's locker.
I guess not, but if we close that up, then it just ends up somewhere else. We're probably still in our bathroom. So.
I don't know. The two Erics are going to end up as licensed plumbers by the time this is done.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. All right. So that sounds good. I mean, I think it's, obviously we need to fix the stuff that's been harmed, but also an opportunity to take a, a space, as you already suggested, turn it into a better space that not only works better, but manifests some pride of place. So.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. So we're a little ahead of schedule. That's a beautiful thing. Got eight minutes before our regular meeting. So I'll report these numbers as, as I already did via email in the regular session, but 14 new positives last weekend and 24 new positives this weekend. Scary numbers. We're at 81 positives. Never seen that number before. You can recall, as I do, back at the point at which when we had 10 positives, it was a source of, of angst. So scary numbers. Not exactly clear, and I doubt it ever will be. What generating those positives, we're not privy to the contact tracing piece of it. And honestly, I somewhat imagine that the contract, contact tracing team is a little bit overwhelmed all in at the moment. But scary numbers. We had a county call today and George Latimer updated everybody about- Scary numbers. We had a county call today and George Latimer updated everybody about, to the extent that anyone knows the situation with the immunizations. Uh, the vaccine. Um, appointments at the county center are full up, not because it's. Not theoretically possible to deliver more vaccines, but. That's all the vaccine they have to deliver at the moment. So. Um. Let's see what he said. Um, the. Westchester County has currently vaccinated about eleven thousand people and. The county center is vaccinating about one thousand one hundred people a day. And then they have another clinic site that's vaccinating between three hundred and three hundred and fifty people a day. So. You know, round figures, that's something like fifteen, sixteen hundred people a day in a county of almost a million people. Uh, we're not going to get to the promised land this way. So. Um, what everybody's hoping for obviously is a big increase in the supply, but at the moment. Uh, uh, we're not seeing it. And even the folks who are eligible in phase one A, one B, which includes teachers and and uh. Public safety and essential workers are having trouble getting appointments i- in any kind of a reasonable timeframe. So. Um. Stay tuned on all of that, but you know, as of today, with our cumulative numbers, which almost certainly. Understate the reality of it, because I'm sure there are cases that went undocumented. Uh, we're already in a circumstance where in the village of Pleasantville, something like one out of every fifteen residents. Has tested positive for COVID at some point since they started counting. And Eric and I were just sort of projecting out into the future. Uh, it it is not at all unreasonable to suggest that. Before this is over, we'll be at a point where ten percent of the population have had, in the village has had COVID. So.
It's intimidating.
Yeah. I mean, if there's any good news and all of that, it it certainly seems that, for example. In the school district and in school districts in general. Um, uh, although there certainly have been plenty of COVID issues with people who. Either themselves tested positive or or were in quarantine because of a close contact who tested positive, but. Um, it it seems that there is not uh much. A- any documented spread within a school. And so. I mean, that kind of re- makes clear what we already knew, which is that in a controlled environment where everybody wears masks and socially distanced. Uh. You can, you can control this thing. Uh, environments where where that doesn't happen, it spreads like wildfire. So.
Mr. Mayor, any news from your calls with Phelps and Northern Westchester about the hospitalizations and?
So I had, I saw the, I didn't see the Phelps numbers this week. I saw the Northern Westchester numbers at the end of last week and. Again, the 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 good news about all of this, despite the spiking numbers overall. Uh, the hospitalization rates remain. Uh, a lot lower than they were last spring. So. Nobody's a hundred percent sure on exactly why that is. Uh, some of it may have to do with. Some better protocols that that keep people in in better. Uh. Better control of the of the virus while at home. Um, but. At any rate, I mean, the good news is uh, there remains a supply of hospital beds, there remains a supply of ICU beds and. Uh, it is such that the George Latimer told us today on the county call that. The tents that are set up opposite the county center as surge hospital beds are going to be dismantled and. I maybe they've already started to. Uh, they're not dismantling the fifty-some-odd hospital bed. Uh, uh, rooms that were built uh essentially on the floor, on the basketball floor. Um, at the county center, those spaces are being used as the vaccine center at the moment. Uh, but they are also being kept in the event uh that there was a hospital surgeon need to stand up extra hospital beds. So. Um, you know, cautiously good news on that front that the hospitalization li- numbers are 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 not as dire as they were.
Um, but, Peter, do they think that that's because of better treatment or are they getting a younger population in or?
It's it's uh, I don't think anybody's entirely sure. Part of it, I think, is is maybe better treatment. Uh, there's some better protocols for folks. That they keep them out of the hospital. Uh, uh, also some thought that. Um. Many of the folks who were the most fragile. Uh, uh, al- already got it and ended up hospitalized in the spring. And then as a sort of related piece of that, uh, folks who are fragile, immunocompromised. Uh, or have uh conditions that uh put them at greater risk are in the view of some. You know, on the case at the moment in ways that they perhaps weren't in March and April when the thing was just starting to become. Front of mind. And so um, m- maybe the folks most likely to end up hospitalized are being. Uh, very careful about masks and social distancing and all of that. So a bunch of factors working together and. Assuming all that turns out to be what's really happening, that's good news. So. I mean, certainly it's good news that some of these steps that people can take in their own lives, albeit. Uh, confronting a lot of limits on what we would like to be doing in our lives are actually working. Um. But it's also clear that if you don't pay attention, bingo. I mean, you can see from the lists of positives that. Uh, uh, there are households where a single person gets it and no one else does. And then there are households where a single person gets it and in the course of the next several weeks, everybody gets it. So. Um. A lot of concern at the moment about the very, the variants of the virus that are now showing up. Uh, some of them supposedly greater contagion. Um, and all the more reason to get the vaccine rolled out. It it appears that the vaccine. Is s- still effective against these varieties of the virus, but uh. Some epidemiologists seem to think it it'll be a a little bit of a game of whack-a-mole to keep on top of all of that. So.
Hmm.
Certainly, I mean, there are issues every day and in almost every significant workplace, uh, and there will be going forward for quite some period of time. Then, who are just at eight and we can start the regular meeting, but uh. Uh, Joe and I participated in the uh meeting with the. Pool task force that was helpful and useful. Joe, do you want to comment on that when we get to the regular announcements or?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So uh, let's finish our work session and we'll start our regular meeting.